Good evening and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, February 24th, 2025. Please be advised a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a short moment of silent meditation and remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The order of council business is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public rehearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization that they represent, and their address unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item, and testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on a specific agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Today is one of those days. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting of Monday, February 24th is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
Is there anyone here to present an item that is on consent? All right. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on one of the items on consent? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Item 1A is setting the hearing date of Monday, March 17th, 2025, at 3:00 p.m. on the assessment of the cost incurred by the city for the assessment of the fees and penalties for neglected buildings on property located at 3801 South 37th Street, 2902 North 41st Street, 7300 Briarhurst Drive, 824 South 16th, 1425 South 16th Street, 1934 F Street, 835 North 30th Street, 3001 Q Street, 1511 South 2nd, 1980 Park, 1859 Van Dorn, 3281 Center, 234 South 38th Street, 1039 C Street, 341 North 30th, 917 South 10th, and 719 West Leon, and assesses of fees and penalties for property cleanup and boardings on property located at 3001 Q Street, 1511 South 2nd Street, and 824 South 16th Street. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right.
Item 2A was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. We can now proceed to Section 4, Public Hearing on Liquor Resolutions.
I'll call Items 4A and B together. Items 4A and B is application of garage beers LLC, doing business as liquid asset sports bar and grill for a Class C GK liquor license located at 2755 JV Lane, Suite 14 through 16, and the related manager application of Jennifer A. Casera.
All right. Is the applicant present today? Welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Drew Salinger, 8600 Executive Woods Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
All right, Mr. Salinger. Would you tell us a little bit about your business?
Yes, I'd be more than happy to. All of us that are part of this all live in the area. We all enjoy the space, have for a very long time. Things we have not enjoyed is it being a nightclub and live music venue and a little bit louder for our tastes. So we're kind of revamping it to be a family-friendly sports bar and grill.
All right. Are there any questions from counselors on this application?
From Investigator Parker.
Investigator Parker, would you mind coming down? We don't see temporary operating permits very often, so we appreciate the education.
Absolutely. Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street.
Yay. All right. Counselman Beckius.
Investigator Parker, two things. Could you explain, as Chair Washington talked about the temporary
Yes.
nature, and then could you also explain some of the detail on the ownership that is beyond what the application here shows?
Sure. Okay, so first off, temporary operating permits are approved by the state. Essentially, what they're doing is kind of operating underneath the previous liquor license as they transition into a newer
Ownership.
format, ownership structure, everything like that. So the state will review it, make sure that, you know, there are no red flags or issues, and then they give the option of, you know, operating under that temporary operating permit. In regards to the ownership, I will take full responsibility. It was a mistake on my part. I don't know if I was looking at another application or what. I was under the impression that Jennifer was the sole owner, and that is not the case. However, it's not reflected in the report, but I can assure you there are no issues with any of the other owners in terms of violations or concerns that we have.
Thank you, Investigator.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there any other questions from counselors on this application?
I take it the suites are all joined together?
Correct.
There's not separate
No.
An entrance for each suite?
Nope. There's all one open space.
All right.
Thank you for keeping this going. I'm looking forward to the new iteration, whatever that is.
We hope to see you guys down there.
Thank you for the invitation. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak on this application, either in favor or in opposition?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve Items 4A and 4B.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, Beckius. All right, any discussion, counselors? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. We can now move forward to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. Please call this item.
Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for January 16th through January 31st of 2025.
All right. Is there anyone here today to speak on a claim against the city? All right, let's take you one at a time, this gentleman, and then we'll just walk back. All right, welcome. Please introduce yourself and your address.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the council. My name is Paul Peter. I'm with the Keating O'Gara Law Firm here in Lincoln. I'm here representing the Foundation for Educational Services, had a claim that was timely submitted and has been a recommendation from the city attorney's office for denial. It's a claim amount is $56,788. I'd like to give some testimony relative to our request that the council respectfully consider this matter in spite of the particular recommendation of the city attorneys for denial. So, background of this is Foundation for Educational Services is a nonprofit entity here in Lincoln. It owns the building located at 13th and O Street on the northeast corner and has been a public citizen providing services to the community for well over 30 years. Like I said, owns the building there. In September, on September 27th of 2024, there was a rather catastrophic water main break going parallel along O Street, right along that corner of 13th and O Street. The end result of that was that there was significant flooding within to my client's building into the basement area. And the, it happened around 10:45 in the evening. We had some alarm systems that went off around 11:00. Our people were deployed there, began doing the work, working with the city to get that water stopped. Subsequently, we needed to start doing a fair amount of water mitigation work, including some ultimate repairs and replacement where the damage had occurred, water going into the basement part of the building. Result of that was a total claim amount of $56,788. It's all represented by receipts and things provided by third-party vendors that we employ. This was not covered by insurance, given the nature of the ingress of the water. So, we did submit a timely claim to the city. We received a letter last month from the city attorney's office indicating that they had evaluated it in conjunction with the Lincoln Water System, conclusion being that they were denying the claim on the basis that there was, in the view of the city attorney's office, there was not any negligence on the part of the city because they didn't have knowledge of this. The reason that we're coming here is we want to ask for the city council to really consider the claim, give us an opportunity to do this, particularly because our evidence is that the city had knowledge, excuse me, going back to 2017. At that point in time, we actually had a water problem with respect to the inlet going from that particular water main into our building. And as a result of that, we had to do some more work around that. And at the city's recommendation, we ended up having to do the rerouting of that from the P Street, which was north of the particular art building, to get back to the water. So, the ostensible reason in the discussions with the city at that time was that the capacity of that water main on O Street was significant. It was tenuous, and the risk that there could be some problems if we continue to have that level of burden of water flow coming from ours. So, it's our view that we have evidence to support the position, city knew or should have known of the particular problems associated with that water main, which in fact came to fruition, you know, almost seven years later. So, we're requesting that the council give us an opportunity. I understand, you know, again, this is a recommendation from the city attorney's office, perhaps that you would consider suspending any action on that. Give us an opportunity to work with the city's attorney's office. Now that I'm involved, I can present, you know, significant evidence, I think, to support it, see if there's an opportunity and a pathway toward resolution. I think that that would be a better pathway, frankly, than just a denial and then looking at litigation under the Tort Claims Act. So, we're respectfully submitting to you that this particular claim, we do think there's underlying evidence to support it, opportunity to have some dialogue with the city attorney's office and see if there's a way to get it resolved at that level. So, that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Counselors, Councilman Beckius?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Peter.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. Have you had conversations directly with the city attorney's office as a representative of the Foundation for Educational Services to date?
Yeah, so literally, I had a call with, I'm sorry, Lily.
Uh-huh.
Yes. Only did advise her pursuant to the letter, they said if you're going to show up to, you know, let them know. We have not had any substantive conversations about this. And honestly, the information I just described to you, going back to 2017, was not a part of our materials that was originally submitted with the claim. It only came to light after we got the denial letter, and my client advised me, hey, you know, we actually had this particular situation in 2017 that could have some impact.
Sure.
Okay.
If no one else has any other questions for Mr. Peter, I'd like to...
Think the city attorney?
Yeah.
I think it's a, the timing's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So, if you, if you don't mind, we're going to ask the city attorney a couple questions. You might want to stand by.
Yeah, I'll be right here. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Lily Ely, Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th.
All right.
Hello.
Hi.
Quick question for you. Do you...
Does the City Attorney's Office feel as though they want any additional time to meet with Mr. Peter? Or are you comfortable that your recommendation stands?
I'm comfortable with my recommendation standing, but I would say if council has questions, we do have Director Elliott here, who I think can shed a little bit more light on maybe some of the history that Mr. Peter may be referencing.
Let's go down that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Director?
Good afternoon, Elizabeth Elliott, Director LTU, 555 South 10th Street. Kind of just a little background on this. So, this water main was installed kind of the end of '76, beginning of '77, so it has been there a while. However, like these good old cast iron water mains, this was actually the first issue that we have had at this location. We did have a few other ones at different parts of O Street. The earliest one back in kind of '99, 2003, were more in between 11th and 12th and O Street. And then just in 2024, we did have 12th Street again, 12th and 13th have some issues. So, the line, down the line, but in this particular area, there has been no historical issues in this area. We don't necessarily have a, an accurate way to proactively test the structure of water mains. What we do is we do look at the number of breaks that we're starting to have in this area. We look at the age of the main in that area. The conversations that were mentioned here, I don't have all of the history on those specific conversations, but given the capacity and all of the connections along that line, it was more of a capacity and get on a better, a different main, a newer main, those types of ones with fewer businesses, fewer there. It was not necessarily due to any of the structural deficiencies concerned about because we weren't aware of any of those. Now, there is, it's kind of a coincidence on this because we are looking at doing some O Street work for street improvement. So, we have been looking at this main to determine, do we want to do the main replacement or any repairs before we come in with the street work and do it? And we have, absent and aside from any of these issues, we are going to replace that main, but it really is more of a, the opportunity because of the street project, and we don't want to tear up a street project five, seven years down the road. So, we are going to replace that. It is up for replacement, but not because of this. Typically, a one-break incident like this would not be caused to replace a main, but given that we are seeing some of that down on 11th and 12th, given that this is more than 40 years old, it makes sense to do it now with a concurrent street project. But that is separate and not because of this, this particular break.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've got a question. Did the pipe fail or did a connection fail or?
With pipes that are getting this old, they just start to get weak in certain areas. And so, we do see them typically, it is at the connection points. Just that's where the pipe, the main is cut, and so most likely that's where you're going to get the weak points. And this was just one of those that we see from time to time throughout the community.
And this is out underneath the street and half the sidewalk?
This one, I'm trying to see from the map. I can't quite, it's right on the edge of this, of the sidewalk and the street. Down on O Street, most of it's in the street and the sidewalk. Right. So, I can't tell you for sure if it's exactly under the sidewalk. It's probably right at the curb line.
Were there other buildings affected by this break?
I'm not aware that there were.
Not that we have knowledge of.
And the records here only indicate this one address. So, I assume based on that that there were no other properties impacted.
Build J.C. Penney's building?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Councilman Weber? Oh, I'm so sorry. Councilman Weber and then Councilman.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Ely, I just kind of want to talk about this claim in a broader sense. Can you explain the city laws rationale behind denying this complaint?
Sure, so with any of our claims, when we receive the claim, we review them with the relevant department. In this case, it was Lincoln Water System. They indicated that they had no prior notice of any structural issues with the water main. And since this was a structural issue that led to the break, we then denied the claim based on no notice. Or right, we recommended denial of the claim based on no notice.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson?
My question is on that 2017 damage, is that not related to that particular water main? Is that a different line or do we have record of that?
My understa- Yeah, my understanding, again, I don't have all of those records because up until just this evening, I was not aware that that was something that was going to be discussed. But my understanding on that, that was more of a private line issue, not a city main issue. But I would have to go back and just confirm that with those records.
If that was a main issue too, is that something that would kind of alter our repair strategy on something like this?
Typically not, especially given that that was more than eight years, or seven, eight years ago. There's nothing to indicate that there was any structural deficiencies in the pipe at this location. And so, nothing that would have alerted us that we need to be cautious or look in this area. Like I said, I think most of this is more of a capacity pressure type connection. Often, it's also just the best one to locate distance-wise. So, it could have been a number of those, but it does not appear, based on the records, that there were any concerns about the structural components of this main.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's any other comments or questions from counselors on this case? Then we'll move ahead to the next claim. Thank you. Welcome. Hi.
Thank you for seeing me today. My name is Larry Carter. Back in July of this last year, the July 31st, we had that massive storm that came through Lincoln, destroying a bunch of trees and such. And I had a tree that was located between the curb and sidewalk. It was a city tree that came down into my property and actually lodged like this, with the trunk of the tree hanging on my house like this. It was still attached. So, we made a call to the City Forestry Department, and they basically said that you were kind of on your own because they would not come to private property to take care of it, which was disappointing. I called Dudley's Tree Service. They came out, took a look, and he immediately made another call to the city again, saying that there's a problem because it's hanging over the sidewalk. Because of the volume of claims, they pretty much say we were on our own again. So, I got a quote. Again, it cost me $6,000 to take this tree down. I understand the law says, well, if something falls on my property, it's kind of on me. But sometimes the law isn't always the best way to do things. I mean, if my, if my tree fell into my neighbor's yard and destroyed some of their property, I would be inclined to, as I'm sure many of you would be, to try to make that right. And I feel making that right would be to give me some kind of compensation back for this. This cost me $6,000, plus I lost two mature river birch trees that were valued at three grand. So, I'm out $9,000. But you can kind of understand, if you being a landowner yourself or homeowner, if this would happen to you, how would you feel about that? I felt abandoned by the city. And just saying tough stuff, basically, you're on your own is not a real good way of doing things. We have a church right nearby that's a loading zone for kids every day, so I had to take it on myself to take care of this. I also had to put cones down to block the sidewalk because people would walk underneath of it, which is just a dangerous situation. So, I took care of it, and I understand that legally, that I'm kind of screwed. But ethically, I believe that something should be, I should get a little help here. And that's why I'm asking for today. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counselors on Mr. Carter's claim?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Councilman Duden?
I think I've talked with you, at least through email, a couple of times. Mr. Carter, did the, did, one of the, who came out and looked at the tree?
Well, originally, Dudley's Do-Right Tree Service came out originally.
You know, and was it the Lincoln Parks Department that came out and looked at it before that?
I don't know that.
You don't know that?
We called them, they said they were so busy. It was like the, right after it happened.
Did you explain to them that it was overhanging the sidewalk? And they didn't offer to bring out barricades to block out the sidewalk?
No.
Nothing?
No. I was told that I would be responsible, because it was private property, they could not do anything. And, you know, we said it was hangover sidewalk, it was just, that's why he called because he thought maybe he would get a little further. And I never heard anything back. She told me I could make a claim to help with, and maybe I get reimbursed, and that's exactly what I did. And I was denied because of the legality of it, which I, I think it's kind of a weird law, but I get it. But I had a tree that fell down in my neighbor's yard here last year, and it destroyed their fence, and I took care of that because I felt I should. So, as a good neighbor, I think that's what should be done. And I'm not asking for, you know, $9,000. I mean, it would be nice just to get some of this back because that's a big hit for anybody to take, any of us, I think.
I guess my only question is, is I think the city has an obligation. When you tell them that there's a hazard, it'd be different if the tree was just laying on the sidewalk. Then you don't have to worry about it falling on everybody.
Right.
But with it overhanging the sidewalk, I think that presents a
Yeah, and the pictures that I sent, I think all you, it obviously shows that.
Yep.
It was not a good, good thing.
No, no. I think that's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right. I saw a few other hands. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? All right, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jayden Schmader, 4834 Madison Avenue.
All right.
So, in July of last year, I was on my way to work, and it was during that bad snow, or storm, and the tree had fell into the road, and my car hit it. And, you know, I was really unable to get out. So, my neighbors who lived in front of the tree, they helped get me out. And they had told me that it had been marked by the city for it to be cut down like two months prior, and it just hadn't been done. And so, my claim was denied. And so, I'm just asking for it to be, you know, looked at again. I'm just, I'm a poor college student. I play football, and when I'm not in school or at meetings or workouts, I'm working for the score, I'm helping my mom back home, so that's it. I'm just asking for some help fixing my car.
All right. Just one moment. Are there any questions from other counselors or questions from counselors on this?
Did you say your name again?
Jayden Schmader.
And Mr. Schmader, you said that the tree was, had been posted by the city?
That's what I was told by my neighbors, but they lived in front of the house. Apparently, they had had some issues or something with it where they'd wanted it cut down for a while, but it hadn't been cut down until it fell down during the storm.
Okay. Councilman Duden, and then I may, go ahead.
Was that tree painted with orange spray paint?
Yes.
At all?
Okay.
The ones that do that is the Parks Department, so.
Okay.
So, it says in the letter of denial, or the recommended letter, says the tree was marked for removal on July 23rd.
Okay.
Of 2024, so just a week ahead of the storm, not even a week ahead of the storm. And did your neighbors tell you that there had been a longer history than that week?
They just told me that it had been marked two or three months prior. They didn't tell me anything else, really.
Yeah.
I was kind of stressed out. I was trying to get to work on time and, so.
Totally understand, yeah, yeah. Well, it looks like it had been marked eight days, seven, eight days ahead. So, the city did have notice of that.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other, Councilman Bowers, please?
I must have missed this. So, did the tree fall on your car? Did you hit the tree? I must have missed that.
So, I was driving up the street, and the tree had fell, and I didn't have time to really stop or, you know, get out of the way, and I hit the tree.
Gotcha, so you were, the tree was already there, you were going up, and then you say you didn't have time to stop, so you hit it? Okay.
So, it fell right before you approached?
What's that?
It fell right when you approached?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think I understood that in the letter either.
Like you saw it fall, sorry. So, you like saw it fall down?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thanks for clarifying that for me.
So, oh, sorry.
Councilman Weber?
Thank you, Chair. So, the tree limb was falling as you were approaching it. Roughly, what was the speed you were approaching it at? And what was the distance in between the tree and your vehicle?
I don't remember exactly how fast I was going. It was, it couldn't have been faster than 15 or 20, whatever was posted in the neighborhoods. The distance, I don't know, I don't know, I wasn't really, I'd say maybe 15. I couldn't really tell you.
No, yeah, that's fair, and I would probably not be able to as well.
Yeah.
And so, I just want to make sure that I have the visual picture correct. So, you're driving, you see the tree limb, and as it falls, you don't have time to brake, and so you drive over it or it hits?
I was braking, and I drove over it too.
Okay, you were braking, and then you drove over it, and it caused damage underneath your vehicle? Or where did it cause damage?
Yeah, underneath, so we had to fix the wheel well. One of my tires had a tree, like limb lodged into it. There was also some cosmetic damage to my door and my front bumper.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, does anyone, would anyone like City Attorney or Parks Director?
I would, yeah. Ms. Ely from City Law.
Yes.
Hello, so just generally, you know, I always think it's helpful when we're making those decisions to just have a better understanding of the rationale of how City Law is approaching this claim. The recommendation is denial, and I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Sure, absolutely. So, in this case, we did have notice. It obviously was marked for removal, but it was marked for removal only eight days prior, and it was assigned to a contractor. So, it was not assigned to city staff, it was assigned to a contractor. And ultimately, the reason the tree falls is due to the storm. So, we're talking the July 31st storm in this case, and so that's why our office recommended denial.
And so, there was no, because I believe it was Mr. Schmader's statement that the neighbors had suggested that potentially there had been notice for a few months. The city had no notice months prior?
Not from the record, not from the forestry records that I have, correct.
Okay. And so, having eight days notice, can you speak to how that works with the Municipal Torts Act when it comes to notice?
Sure, so with tree claims, our foresters, in their infinite wisdom, I can't pretend to know how they make those calculations, will mark the tree for priority, or alternatively, will assign it to a contractor. Depending on how much time is allocated within those priority levels, it's not an exact number. I'm not going to give an exact number. Then we make a legal analysis on whether that falls within our notice period and their discretionary function as a department in allocating their resources.
And so, what, notice, a typical notice period, right? Is that like a reasonable amount of time for forestry to tend to the tree? What, what do we typically determine as?
So, it would dip, for, for tree claims or forestry, it would depend on, one, the priority level, or alternatively, if it was assigned to a contractor. If it's assigned to a contractor, it will happen between, you know, whatever that contracting period is with that contractor.
And so, then if it gets assigned to a contractor, that contractor makes their own determination of priority or?
That is probably a Parks question, I don't know.
Okay. I don't know if there's anyone here from Parks to.
There are, there are two people.
Oh, perfect.
Our city foresters here and our Parks Director.
Okay, well, I can ask them that later. I don't know if anyone has questions for Ms. Ely, well, she's up here.
I'm having a little trouble with the timeline as well, but I think the Parks Director could hear that up.
You know, yeah, so.
Our friends from Parks and Rec.
Would the city forester please come forward?
Can I sit down?
Yes, yeah.
Good point.
Welcome, good evening.
Good evening, Chris Myers, Lincoln Parks and Recreation, City Forester, 901 West Pond. Good evening, Chris Myers, Lincoln Parks and Recreation, City Forester, nine oh one West Pond.
So I, I guess my question is, when a contractor gets assigned a tree, uh, or, you know, a, a tree to be removed, are, is it their discretion to determine the prioritization, or does that come from the City of Lincoln?
Well, uh, first and foremost, can you hear me okay?
Um, actually, if you could, yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
That is better, thank you.
Thank you. Those trees, there was a series of trees around Westland-
Okay.
Uh, that were going to be taken down by the contractor. So, um, it was a priority three, which means we'll try and get those taken care of within, um, a certain amount of time. A priority one is within seven days, priority two is within thirty days. So, um, it was assigned to a contractor, and, um, like was pointed out, it was eight days before the storm, and the goal was to have the trees addressed before school started, uh, at Westland. And that's why they were marked out at that date, and the contractor was available. So, we did have one complete tree fail in that storm, roots and all, so. So it was timely, but unfortunately, um, in this case, uh, it had fallen into the street. Right.
Thank you, that, that's helpful information. I'll have a question for the Assistant City Attorney after that, but-
Um, I have, um, I have one question, Councilman, I'll come back to you. But, um, Mr. Myers, you said that a priority one tree, um, usually it's, it's addressed within seven days.
Yes.
And a priority two tree within thirty days.
Yes.
And this was a priority three, so what's the timeline on priority three?
It depends on how many things are in the queue as to how that, um, needs to be addressed. Um, it wouldn't come to the, unless we had knowledge that it was dropping limbs prior to that, then it would have been moved up to a two or a one.
Okay, and-
In this case-
Pardon me, go ahead.
In this case, it was a part of a bigger project.
Okay, and when a tree is assigned to a private contractor, does that mean it, it's going to be a priority three?
It, at that time, once they get there, when, when the contractor's there, they work until they're done.
Okay.
They don't get pulled off like we do, um, in that case. That's their focus, is that, that list of trees in, in that location.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilman Duden?
Yeah, the trouble I'm having with the timeline is, when is this reported initially? When did someone call in and say, hey, there's a problem with this tree out, out front?
I believe, um, there wasn't any known knowledge of, prior to that storm, prior to the storm.
So you guys just had me driving down the street, and you marked it?
No, we identified the trees that needed to come out for that project, and so we marked all of the trees around Westland that were failing, that needed to come out.
Okay, and you did that on the eight days before-
Yes.
The storm?
Yes, yes.
All right, that, I was trying to figure out why he, he was bringing up that, uh, uh, the neighbors or whatever said that they'd called in, you know, two months ago or something like that, on the tree.
I don't necessarily see that in my notes.
So I, I, thank you, Chair Washington. I just want to clarify timelines here. The eight days, was that eight days before the incident, or eight days before the storm?
Both.
Okay, so the, the tree fell on the same day, and so the notice happened eight days before that?
Yes, and I would say from a legal perspective, I don't know that I would use the word notice, because this was part of a project bid, this was part of a contracted removal that was planned for the Westland neighborhood.
And that was actually going to be my question to you, Ms. Ealy, is the having, the, whether it's notice, knowledge, eight day, having, it marked eight days before the storm, before the incident with the vehicle, when the expectation of a priority three is beyond thirty days, how does that align with the Municipal Torts Act?
Yeah, so that's when the discretionary function of a department and how they allocate their resources would come, um, into play. So part one of that is, we obviously have foresters who go out and inspect trees, if this was one that had come in on a report, for instance, um, and then they decide what priority level that is, and so then the discretionary function kind of comes into play on how they're going to allocate their resources to take care of those priority one, priority two, priority three trees.
Are there any other questions or comments? Councilman Bowers, please.
Were there any pictures submitted of the damage to the car?
There are, yes, would you like to see them?
Go quick.
And I can turn when you're ready.
No, that's, oh yeah, yeah, if there's more, sure.
Ooh, that's a big tree.
That'd be scary.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, any other questions for Ms. Ealy, Mr. Myers, anyone else, any other staff members? All right, thank you very much, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here today with a claim against the city who'd like to speak on that claim? Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Nicole Marino, I'm at twenty-four oh one Nancy Drive. Um, I submitted a claim to the city on, um, I believe it was January twenty-eighth was when I got the letter of denial back. Um, May first, I hit a pothole. Um, I was coming down O Street, going north on Twenty-Fifth and O, and just through the light, um, I provided pictures too, but just through the light, there was a big pothole,
Okay.
that I hit, and it pushed my car into the curb, um, hitting both my tires on the curb, and caused me over three thousand dollars worth of damage. Um, obviously, I wouldn't have had the damage to my car if I didn't hit the pothole.
Yeah.
Um, and so I'm asking the city to cover it. Um, I put it on a credit card, because I don't want to put it through my insurance, that's a lot of money, that would cost me more money. I have a teenage son that's driving, so I decided to split it on my credit card, but, um, I have pictures of the potholes and the curb that I hit. Um, I made copies for everybody, I don't know if you want that, or if I just put it on your-
Yes, please.
Just up there, one, yeah.
Copy, you can put on the projector.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, if I may?
Go ahead.
Um, thank you for coming down, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Um, are these pictures of the potholes after they had been repaired?
They were, so the time that it happened was like nine thirty at night, and it being on O Street and dark, I couldn't get pictures right away, so that was after the fact that it had happened.
Okay.
Um, it was probably a month afterwards that I took the pictures. I ended up having neck surgery, so it took me a little while to get them, so.
Okay, so the repair, in theory, happened in between, okay, perfect, I want to make sure I was understanding.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question, I was still looking for the pothole.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, I may have a, I, I think the letter, um, recognized it, um, the pothole was reported to the city on July tenth, and, and that's the, the day of, that you hit it.
Uh, May first was the day that I hit it.
Oh, you hit the pothole on May first, and, um, it looks like this, uh, LTU, City Maintenance, Street Maintenance, got a, a report of the potholes being present on July tenth, um, after which they, they repaired them. Um, and you're saying these pictures were taken, um, after they were repaired?
Yeah, they didn't repair the curb, as you can see on one of them, where several people have hit the curb from it.
And that's underneath the-
Yes.
Cautionary sign, okay, but the potholes themselves have been repaired by the time you were able to take the picture? Yeah. Um, I think I have a question for Director Elliott.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Director. Um, can you talk a little bit about potholes? I know that we have potholes in Lincoln, um, and in the last year or so, um, I started to notice that there was a pothole. People could log in and say, here's a pothole.
Yes, so, so the last couple of years through the city's, um, uplink,
Mm-hmm.
is where individuals can report potholes. They can report them while they're right there on site, like if someone was crossing the street in this location, they could put it there, and, or they could wait till they get home and put it in through the computer, um, or they can call us and, and report those. Uh, as soon as we get the repair, we're typically within seventy-two hours, um, business hours. If it comes in on a Friday, it might be a little longer, but without, out there repairing those within seventy-two hours, usually much quicker than seventy-two, but that, that's kind of our standard practice, and so as soon as we're aware of them, um, that's when we go out and repair them.
Okay, and when you got the notice on July tenth on this pothole, do you by any chance happen to know when you repaired the pothole?
Yes, so on this one, it was, um, July tenth, which was a Wednesday, and we had it, um, repaired by Monday the fifteenth.
All right, and so that's, that's, is that, then that's pretty typical. Um, that's maybe a little bit longer, though it does meet the seventy-two hours.
Right, because there's the win, the weekend in there, and, um, but yes, that, I don't know the exact time it came in on the tenth, so it, it may have been the end of the day, I'm not sure, but yes, we got it on the tenth, and it was repaired on July fifteenth that morning.
Okay.
We did go back into our system to look to see if we had received any complaints, um, in the area of May first.
Right.
So we went back and looked four weeks before, and we looked four weeks after May first, and we hadn't received any complaints at that location, um, or in the vicinity of that area. Because sometimes people just say in the intersection of, and give the cross streets, so we don't know which one it is, so we just look in the entire area and, and go that way, but there is nothing in this vicinity four weeks before or four weeks after.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilman Duden? Yeah?
Uh, you don't take pictures before you fix them, do you?
Not typically, no.
Councilman Bowers?
I, uh, thanks, I just, I'm just trying to make sure, so you hit it on, uh, in May of twenty twenty-four, and then the city then had notice of it in July tenth of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not like notice in July of twenty-three?
Right.
And then hit it almost a year, okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for coming down and-
Thank you.
-presenting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. All right, is there anyone else with a claim against the city who'd like to come forward? All right, Madam Clerk, um, let's-
Can I make a motion?
You can, let, have her read the motion, uh, have her read the original, and then we'll, we'll take motions. Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
I'll call item five A, accepting and approving the report of due impending claims against the city for January sixteenth through January thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, introduced by Show.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, Carlson. All right, now, I'm, we're open for motions.
I'd like to make a motion on the, the Larry Carter to extend that at least two weeks.
Okay, so-
To look at it.
Your motion is to remove from deny?
Yeah.
So you'd like to-
Remove from deny, depending.
Okay, all right, so a motion to remove, uh, and hold depending for two weeks, is there a second? I can second that. Okay. Um, let's, any discussion? Let's call the roll on this motion to delay, or motion to remove from, um, denial, depending. Weber?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Show?
No.
Beckius?
No.
Washington?
No.
Motion lost. Four to three. All right, is there another motion to amend?
No, ma'am.
All right, then let's call the original. Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Show?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one. All right, let's move forward. We have ordinances, third reading, and related resolution, section six.
I'll call item six A, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefects by the letter N by creating the classification Assistant Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator, introduced by Duden.
Not yet.
So moved?
Second.
Second, Carlson?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to amend, um, uh, bill twenty-five dash two, uh, with the substitute ordinance, uh, attached in our, uh, packet to correct some type of, uh, typographical errors, um, as requested by City Law.
Okay.
Second.
Second?
Show.
Show? All right. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on the motion to amend. Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Now the main motion? Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. All right.
Item six B is an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue and sale and delivery of general obligations Stormwater Drainage and Flood Management System Bonds, Series twenty twenty-five, in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed thirteen million nine hundred thousand dollars, introduced by Duden.
So moved?
I'll second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Please call the roll. Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item six C is approving a real estate sales agreement between the City of Lincoln and Neighbor Works, Inc., for the sale of city-owned property generally located at thirty fifteen N Street, introduced by Duden.
So moved?
Second.
Second, Beckius, or was it?
Bowers.
Bowers, sorry, it's Beckius, second Beckius, sorry. Earring. Okay, um, any discussion? Please call the roll. Weber?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item six D is annexation two four zero one zero, application request of Metadol LLC to annex approximately forty-five acres, a property generally located at South Ninety-Eighth and Van Dorn Street, introduced by Duden.
So moved?
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Madam Clerk? Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item 6E is change of zone 17030F, application of Matadoll LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential PUD Planned Unit Development, from an R3 Residential to P Public Use District, and from an AG Agriculture District to P Public Use District, with associated waivers on property generally located at 98th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion? Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 6F is amending Lincoln, Minnesota Code, Chapter 10.32, to allow free parking in areas designated as being reserved for handicapped persons, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson.
Um, I just have a statement that I would like to say, but, um, after that, then I do have a motion to amend, just to clarify, um, on-street parking, um, which I'll bring forward in a second. Uh, colleagues, I appreciate the thoughtful discussion on this proposal and the opportunity to bring forward a policy that moves Lincoln toward greater accessibility for all. This ordinance is a practical, necessary step to ensure that individuals with disabilities are not faced with unnecessary financial or logistical burdens when they need to park in our city. It is a measure that aligns with our goal to make Lincoln a place where all residents can fully participate in daily life. Under this policy, vehicles displaying a valid handicap placard, whether blue, red, or handicap-designated license plate, will be allowed to park at metered spaces without paying the meter fee while still adhering to posted time limits. This approach is not new. It's been successfully implemented in cities like Omaha, Denver, and Chicago. It's a simple, common sense measure that prioritizes accessibility without creating significant financial strain on the city. Currently, Lincoln's handicap-designated stalls are non-metered, but when those are occupied, individuals with disabilities are left with few options. They are forced to park further away or face an unexpected financial burden just to access essential services, workplaces, or businesses. Additionally, I've received reports that many of Lincoln's parking meters are difficult or impossible to access for those with mobility challenges, whether due to sidewalk obstructions, placement, or physical barriers. These meters can create unnecessary obstacles for those who are already facing daily accessibility challenges. This policy is not the end goal or final step in making our city accessible and does not completely eliminate the challenges Lincolnites with mobility, health, or accessibility limitations face, but it is a step to help alleviate these barriers as our city works towards our goal of being accessible to all residents. It's not just about parking, it's about fairness, dignity, and independence. I want to extend my, uh, sincere gratitude to those who testified in support of this initiative, Director Randy Jones with Aging Partners, Brad Muirans with Disability Rights Nebraska, Edison McDonald with the Ark of Nebraska, and Major General Roger Lemke with the seniors foundation. Your expertise and advocacy are invaluable, and I appreciate your commitment to making our community even more accessible. I would also like to thank City Law and Urban Development for their help in crafting, uh, this ordinance and providing technical assistance to get it across the finish line. Also, I want to thank my colleagues for their engagement with this process. Councilman Brody Weber, who represents downtown, where the majority of metered parking stalls are located, has been a strong advocate for ensuring that our parking policies reflect the needs of all residents, and I appreciate his early support of this effort. Councilman Justin Carlson asked thoughtful and important questions that helped refine and strengthen this proposal to ensure it is, uh, that it is effective. And Councilman Benny Show, who represents the city at large, who has a deep understanding of how city policies impact daily life, provided valuable insight that contributed to the development of this ordinance, and thank you to Councilman Tom Duden for his early support in getting this across the finish line. I appreciate each of them for their commitment to making Lincoln a city that works for everyone. Finally, I want to give a special and heartfelt thank you to former Councilwoman Tammy Ward. Former Councilwoman Tammy Ward's dedication to accessibility and advocacy for Lincoln residents laid the foundation for this ordinance. She played a crucial role in researching, organizing, and pushing this initiative forward long before today's vote. Her leadership and persistence ensured that this issue received the attention it deserved, and we would not be at this point without her hard work and passion for our city and the residents of Lincoln. This is a step forward, and while there is still work to do to make Lincoln truly accessible for everyone, policies like this remove barriers and work to build a city where everyone can participate in daily life without unnecessary obstacles. I would ask and urge my colleagues to support this measure, and I look forward to continuing our work, uh, toward making Lincoln even more accessible.
Well said. Um, you have a motion to amend?
I do. I would like to offer a motion to amend, um, after the word "city-owned," insert "on-street" for clarification.
I'll second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion on the motion to amend? All right. Madam Clerk, let's call the roll on the motion to amend.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
And now the main motion.
Madam Chair?
Oh, we're... Yes.
I, I was just gonna say, while we're in discussion before we vote on this, um, I just wanted to thank Councilman Bowers for bringing this policy forward. Um, you know, this is the best part of the job, in my opinion, is when a council member gets to use their personal experiences and their, you know, perspectives to craft really common sense policy, and that's exactly what I view this as, is a common sense yes. Um, and so I will be voting to support it, and, you know, I think we need more of this because I think this is what this job should be all about, but, um, so thank you, Councilmen, for introducing this policy.
Councilman Ba, uh, uh, Beckius, please.
Sure. I just wanted to commend Councilman, uh, Bowers on this, uh, work. Uh, this legislation is simple, inexpensive, and expands opportunity for, uh, additional involvement for those with barriers. That's all.
Yep. Um, well said, everyone. I, I really believe that our community is a community that can be welcoming to all, and anything that moves us in that direction of making our community more accessible is a good thing for the City of Lincoln. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Uh, let's move forward. Madam Clerk.
Resolutions, first reading to section seven are items 7A through 7K. And then our pending list are items 8A through 8D.
All right. As noted at the start of the meeting, um, we, tonight is a night where we have open public comment, and so we will take, uh, anyone who would like to come forward and address the council on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda nor planned for a future agenda. Uh, each speaker has five minutes, and we just ask for civility and that, uh, the business of council is allowed to proceed unimpeded. Who would like to approach? Counsel first? Ms. Fenner?
Hello, my name is Anastasia Fenner. I'm gonna waive my address for my own safety. This council is nothing, uh, even close to, to anywhere civil, and, uh, I would really greatly like to illustrate that point. One second. What I would first like to illustrate, or to show, is today. These are photos of two, two young girls and their father going home February 24th, 2025, to their rubble, to their bombed home. Bombs that Lincolnites might make, right here in Lincoln, Nebraska. We make 2,000-pound bombs that are dropped on people's homes, like this. A lot of people don't, don't get a return because they're busy, uh, you know, buried in the rubble under their homes. Not only do we contribute to, (sigh) to this kind of pain, but we also contribute to this. A Palestinian ex-detainedee named Mohammed was released a week ago after enduring extreme torture in Israeli occupation, torture, and deti, and detention camps. He was abducted a year ago, and I probably showed you a photo of him a year ago being abducted, and you still did nothing, you still allowed bombs to be sent, you did not support an arms embargo, and now here is this man, brutalized. During interrogations by Israeli forces, he was exposed to brutal beatings, torture, and highly corrosive chemicals, including acid and flammable substances, causing severe burns and loss of sight in his left eye. His physical and psychological condition is critical, and he is in desperate need of care that can only be gotten abroad. Good grief. The Lincoln City Council is particularly culpable in this genocide. They, they are aware that products like the HP laptops that they use, um, play a key role in maintaining Israel's biometric ID system, which restricts the movement of Palestinians within occupied territories. They support Pepsi-Cola, which Tom Duden was drinking some, I saw Bowers getting some recently today, seen Sandra Washington, and, well, Duden again. So they, they do not care that not only the city makes sure that those vending machines are here that support this, this brutal occupation, (sigh) but, but they drink it themselves, which, which is pretty, pretty egregious to, 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 to say that your people that support, you know, a, a good city, a better city, and I, I don't really believe that.
... I view of your right to treatment until another prisoner saves you with limited resources without anesthesia or medication.
This is the kind of atrocity that our city is allowed to go forward. Making threads from blankets to try to stitch up their fellow prisoners. That's the kind of behavior that we support. Not only do we support it, you know, through all these fun little ways, but here is an official document from the City of Lincoln. This is from the Office of the City Treasurer, and right here, you can see, uh, Wells Fargo holds, you know, quite, quite a good chunk of change. And we know that Wells Fargo, aside from being, you know, associated with other horrible things, like the Dakota Access Pipeline, also was part of, uh, you know, an influx of $500 million into, you know, Israeli defense systems. That's what your tax dollars are going for, that's where your money's saved.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward?
Good evening. I'm Roger Lemke, 2501 North 74th Street, uh, District 1, and I'm here tonight, along with Liz Shay McCoy, to just bring you up to speed quickly on exactly what's going on out at Wayuka. You've driven by there, hopefully, you've seen the retaining wall that's up and so forth. We've previously briefed Benny, we've briefed Sandra, uh, on, on the program and so forth, so let me just kind of tell you where we are and where we're, where we're heading real quick. Uh, as you know, the tiles came down in August of '22. We've been working since then to clean the tiles, 763,000, 75% complete, but what that means is that we've still got 190,000 to go. But they're moving right along, and they should be gone, be done with that a little later, uh, this spring, going into, uh, into summer. You see the retaining wall, the next thing you're gonna see going up is something called tilt-up technology. You're gonna see, uh, 10 or 14 10-inch, uh, 10-foot sections made horizontally, tilted up, and attached. And that's what will form the basis for putting the tile on, uh, later this year. We're hoping to be able to do that again, starting this summer. Uh, along with that, then, we've raised about 3.1 million up till now. We've got about a million to go, which is one reason I'm here tonight, simply to ask, uh, your, any help that you can provide in terms of funding that might be available, or any contacts that you can give to us of those that might be interested in donating. Um, I will tell you, and the, the message we use is that we're shovel-ready. We are, especially now that the weather has changed, (laugh) so we are ready to go when we get the money, uh, raised. When finished, we're very likely gonna have something in the city that will be, that will make the Guinness World Record. It could very likely be the largest freestanding mosaic mural in the world. We're currently working on, on that, if you will. And also, there's more to it than that. Uh, currently working on a tactile model that will go up into the Nebraska History Museum, so those that are hearing, that are, uh, visually impaired will be able to finally see, if you will, in their way, what the mural is all about. And then we've got a seven-session lesson plan that's already on the internet that, uh, middle school, high school teachers can use, so you can imagine schools going through the lessons, if you will, about Pershing, the mural, the timeframe, and then jumping a bus and coming to Lincoln to visit it on their own. And so with that, then, what we're envisioning here is a tremendous tourism opportunity for the Lincoln community. I've been involved with putting up Walk to the Rock at Chimney Rock in Scotts Bluff. Over a year's time after we opened up the walk, we've had visitors from almost every country in the world and every state in the Union going to Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, to Walk to the Rock. You could have the same thing here in Lincoln when we get the mural put up. So again, my ask is very, very simple. Any funding that you're aware of, that, that may be in trouble of not getting used this year, and it needs to be done, we're ready. Any other contacts that you can provide me, we're ready to reach out and see what we can do. And if you want any more detailed information, let me know, and we'll be more than happy to come in and give you pictures and things like that. So with that, Liz, anything you want to use the time up?
Of course. I, uh, (laugh) we've been working with the city since 2021, and I've been working with several of these, uh, of all of you. Some of you are new since, uh, we've been, started this project, but it's been a partnership of the city, working with a small group of volunteers, to actually get something done that's important and will be impactful, not only to the City of Lincoln, but the state of Nebraska. So I want to thank all of you. It's, it's like, we have gone from 4.1 to $1 million. I was almost gonna say 1.2, but we just raised $200,000. So, as Roger was saying, we want to finish this up, but we don't always know where that funding, those little pockets, wherever they may be, can be found. So our, my number's all over the internet, cell number, email, everything.[1669.99]